Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alaria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Would you please stand to pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation and our God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for the lateness of the meeting and the starting of the meeting today, but we had another hot meeting going this morning. First of all, the meeting this morning resulted in the recommendation of the Economic Industrial Development Commission to follow the state law on prevailing wage, which is 113 Industrial Revenue Bond Project, and that is concerning the prevailing wage. Ron, do you want to add anything to that?
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to say that the CIC did approve that action this morning. There's no further action necessary by the Board of Commissioners as we understand. We just wanted to make that comment, and it is the Industrial Revenue Section 133.05, I believe, but it's Section 133 of the Ohio Revice Code.
Okay, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is we have a certificate from Mo, the Lorraine County Deputy K-9 Dog Perkin. And I think he's getting rather impatient. He's been here for at least an hour.
He's actually trying to work right now. He's looking for drugs. One of those last three guys who are here. I think they were the last ones up here, weren't they?
In a few minutes, he'll have some dog bones because we called the Dog Pound and asked him to sense him over for him, just because he's been patient. Anyway, this is a certificate of honor presented to Mo, Lorraine County Sheriff K-9, recognizing your many years of service, loyalty, companionship, and thanks to your trainer and friend Deputy Bob Perkins for providing this service to the citizens of Lorraine County. This is presented by the Board of Lorraine County Commissioners, Commissioner Blair, and myself. We're waiting for Commissioner Morris' signature on here. His father, I believe, or his grandfather passed away, so he's not here right now. Anyway, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, you Mo.
Well, he's taking retirement life pretty good. He's starting to pour a coddle a little bit here, but he's probably gained about 10 pounds since he retired because his activity level's down, but I got to watch because his arthritis is really bad, and that's the main reason he had to retire. So, he was, he has a heart of gold. He loves to work, but he just, his body's telling him it's time to slow down, so. But I would like to thank everyone on behalf of the Sheriff's Department of District.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. Madam Chair? I mean, yeah, there I go.
Want to go to annexation? Do you want to go to annexation?
10:30, yes.
At this time, we have a public hearing scheduled on proposed annexation of approximately 3.33 acres in Carlo Township to the City of Alaria, Ohio. Attorney Garrett Murray is acting on behalf of Robert D. Yost, trustee of the Robert D. Yost Trust agent. This petition was submitted to this office on March 20, 2002, for this proposed annexation. The petition was filed with the county auditor and engineer. Engineers reviewed the accuracy of petition and map, and by report dated in March 26, 2002, the engineer had indicated no discrepancies. The land is adjacent and contiguous to the City of Alaria. The engineer requested the county prosecutor's office to look into the proposed annexation to see if the parcels north of the acreage to become a township island. The City of Alaria would be on the northwest and south side in the township of Eaton on the east. The Alaria City Council adopted ordinance number 2002-97 that was dated May 6, 2002, setting forth services to be provided to the property if the annexation was granted. By the Commissioners' Resolution Number 02-309, adopted April 25, 2002, received this petition and map and scheduled a public hearing. On June 5, 2002, Attorney Garrett Murray filed an amended petition decreasing the acreage from 3.33 to 1.33 acres. The petition was again filed with the county auditor and engineer for review. The annexation hearing was convened on June 13, 2002, at 10:30 a.m., and by the request of Attorney Garrett Murray and Attorney Al Schrader, Council for Carlo Township, the hearing was to be continued until 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, June 27, 2002. Attorney Schrader was out of town and not able to attend June 13's hearing. The county engineer reviewed the amended petition and map, and by report dated June 20, 2002, indicated the map and description do agree, and the area is adjacent and contiguous to the City of Alaria. The engineer felt that if the annexation would put a part of the parcel in the city and a part of the parcel in the township of Carlo.
Okay, Bob, you're taking jury's place today. Bob will have to administer an oath to anyone wishing to give testimony, so if there's anyone here wishing to speak on, in regards to this issue, please stand.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about the gathering and annexation carried with the Cruz and nothing but the Tusa help we got?
Mr. Murray, if you have additional comments?
Yes, Madam Chairman. My name is Garrett Murray, and my address is 490 East Avenue, Alaria, Ohio. And Mr. Schrader and I have been talking this morning, and in view of the fact of your agenda, long agenda today, and the fact that we will have a hearing on this matter, we've agreed to request a continuance on this matter and come back when we would have more time.
Okay. Would you like for us to set a date today?
I would.
July 11 will be our next board meeting, but you will be out of town, I understand? Possibly July 18. We have, that's the day we also have three or four annexations we have to make a decision on, not hearings, but I don't know if you want to take the time for that, on that day or not. The following Thursday will be July 25. We have the annexation hearing that day off of Grafton Township at 10:30. August 8, Thursday, there's nothing scheduled right now.
Are you hearing those dates, Garrett?
Yes, July 18 would be satisfactory with me, or July 25. On the 18th, July 25. August 1.
August 8.
August 8 is bad for me. I've got a hearing in the 48th county.
August 1 is also free.
August 1?
There's nothing scheduled that day right now.
August 1 would be a good day.
August 1 would be good for me.
Okay, we'll continue this to August 1.
I move that we continue this hearing until August 1. At what time, Roxanne, at 10:30? Is that agreeable?
Yes.
At 10:30.
Thank you.
Are you second?
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under the resolutions, any motion for discussing consideration of the recommendation of the community improvement corporation?
No, we already did that. Mrs. Vassie announced that there was no further action required, and the other issue is under continuation by the CIC.
Okay.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Okay, need a motion to approve the Job and Family Services bills for payment?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
Some move. Support.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
There are a few advances today. There's one for $32,000 to the Charles Bear Baskett Bridge, and the Alcohol and Drug Board will be receiving $323,062 and $343,682.
All some move. Support.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Requisitions?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
Some move. Support.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Approving bills for payments?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees in the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Some move. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, there was some temporary help on their hires, but we didn't have a starting date, and usually a temporary is temporary, but we have one temporary that's been here eight months, and I'm questioning just what is temporary?
Well, it's not necessarily, those aren't hires, as we discussed previously. Those are temp service. Temp, it's kind of an oxymoron.
I mean, how long are we going to have a temp on?
Until the position is filled.
You know, I think within eight months, we would have had time to fill a position.
There's been various reasons why the position wasn't filled, but we still needed somebody performing the task. I do agree, though, that eight months is getting on the excessive side, but it's not a temporary employee, it's a temporary service filling the position. I believe that that is finishing up. You're talking about the one that we had across the hall was the eight-month one. I believe she's coming on staff next week. Didn't we pass a resolution hiring? That's just a cleanup resolution to housekeeping.
Okay, but from here on out, when we hire a temp, I think that we should put a starting date in it, you know, an ending date so that it's not prolonged for eight months, a year, or whatever.
I think we can do that. Mr. Folt was out when the personnel sheet came around, so I didn't have that data to put into that sheet for you, but I will in the future, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Need to allocate $7,083 from Commissioners' Computer Equipment Fund for the Lorraine County Board of Elections Alaria Office to purchase two new file servers and a 21-inch monitor from MicroAdvantage Incorporated from Alaria, Ohio, due to the existing servers being old and unreliable. Lorraine County Data Board has approved this request on April 19, 2002.
Madam Chair, I would request that you table this issue. We're handling this through the requisition process. This is a duplication of work that we're already doing. In my review of the agenda, I failed to catch that, so we're not, we don't need a resolution on this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Let your approval enter into various purchase of service contracts on behalf of the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, and authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board with Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agency and Manatron Incorporated Saber Systems of Canton, Ohio, to number one for the fiscal year 2002 to assist the CSEA with sending data from the county legacy system to the state of Ohio via either the file transfer protocol or CD-ROM effective retroactive to March 1, 2002 through June 30, 2002, in amount not to exceed $14,875. Fiscal year 2003 to assist the CSEA with sending data from the county legacy system to the state of Ohio via either the FTP or CD-ROM effective July 1, 2002 through December 31, 2002, in amount not to exceed $19,875. Purchase of service contract between Department of Job and Family Services and Children and Families Council for state fiscal year 2003 for the Help Me Grow Program Early Start Component in the amount of $969,223.91 effective July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003. Small Scholars University in Lorraine, Ohio for child daycare effective July 1, 2002 through December 31, 2002. Goodwill Industries of Lorraine County Incorporated to provide education and training opportunities to eligible old WF recipients effective July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003, in the amount of $90,000 using TANF funds for state fiscal year 2003. Lorraine City Schools for the Fast Track GED in the amount of $43,812.24 using TANF dollars for state fiscal year 2003 effective July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003. The Lorraine City Schools for the Fast Track, that's English speakers of other languages in the amount of $46,235.59 using TANF dollars for state fiscal year 2003 effective July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003. Common Ground in Oberlin, Ohio for the camperships at Earth Camp for 120 children in the sum of $18,000 using TANF state fiscal year 2003 effective July 1, 2002 through September 30, 2003. Lorraine County JVS for fiscal year 2003 for the Assessment and Career Counseling Program, Pathways Program in the sum of $84,315.71 effective July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003. Lorraine County JVS for fiscal year 2003 for the Career Counseling Program in the amount of $84,315.71 effective July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003. Lorraine County Children's Services for the Kinship Navigator Program in the amount of $53,415 using TANF funds for state fiscal year 2003 that's effective July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003.
Some move. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Yes.
You might have the amount.
Mrs. Golsky from the Department of Children, of Jobs, and Family Services. Would you approach the mic, please?
Hi. Morning, Madam. You indicated that the Pathways Program and the Career Counseling are both the same amount. I think that's a typo, Roxanne.
Which, which number?
I think the... It's the pathway should be $76,936.
Pathway should be how much? Even?
Yes. And then the career counselor would be the same, would be the 84 that you've listed. Okay? Thanks.
Want to make a correction, Mrs. Vassie?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Golsky.
Okay, we need to award contract to David Williams and Associates of Alliance, Ohio in the amount of $26,157 for handicapped playground equipment for the City of Amherst Mod Needing Park. The estimate of cost was $24,800. This was the only bid received, which is within 10% of the estimate. Community Development Block grant funds will pay for this entire project. The Community Development Department and the City of Amherst have reviewed and recommend approval.
Some move. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to authorize the Lorraine County Sheriff to apply for federal fiscal year 2003, which is October 1 of 2002, through September 30 of 2003, the Governor's Highway Safety Office grant to perform three separate traffic blitzes in the townships. The first one will be conducted during the Thanksgiving weekend for DUI enforcement and awareness. The second is mandatory by grant guidelines and will be held February 2003 for child safety and seatbelt enforcement and awareness. The third will be during the 2003 Memorial Day weekend for speed enforcement and awareness. Patrol officers will be working approximately 120 overtime hours per blitz. The cost of these hours will be under $4,000 per blitz, which will be reimbursed by the grant. No local match is required. This application must be postmarked in order than July 1, 2002.
Do you want to move on?
Sure, I'll move.
Second.
Discussion?
Do you want the sheriff to come in?
Sheriff, would you want to come in on that?
Morning, Commissioners and everyone.
Good morning.
This is the same grant that we had last year, and the nice thing about this grant, it doesn't cost the county any money. This is the money that comes from the state, from the Governor's Highway Safety Office grant, and it is, there is three types of it, like I say. One's DUI enforcement, one's a speeding enforcement, and one's a safety enforcement for seat belts and child restraint, so. We've done this in the past, and the good thing about it is we don't sneak up on anybody. It's advertised in the papers that we're doing it. It's put to the press, so everybody knows about it, so it's one of the awareness type things. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to authorize the reappointment of the following members to the Children's Services Board: David Davies, Kenneth Stumpfauer, Mike Conabear, and Pastor Marsetz Cunningham. The above reappointments are for four-year terms effective June 27, 2002 through December 31, 2008.
Some move. Second.
Discussion?
I don't think those, if it's four-year terms, I don't think 2008 is appropriate.
Six, it should be six.
Six.
Six, excuse me. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for the correction.
Yeah, it's a typo. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to authorize additional appropriation to the Lorraine County Sanitary Engineers Fund for planning purposes to continue future improvement projects as follows. A for professional engineering services for the Columbia West River Wastewater Treatment Plant Elimination, Phase B only, preliminary design phase, $10,300. B for professional engineering services for Westview Wastewater Treatment Plant Elimination, Phase B only, preliminary design phase, $39,600. And C, professional engineering services for Taylor Street and Broadway Avenue Sanitary Sewer, Phase B only, preliminary design phase, $13,600, for a total of $63,500.
Also move. Second.
Mr. Carney is here. Before we vote on this, I would like for him to explain what the goal is and the purpose
Yes, good morning. Ken Carney, Lorraine County Sanitary Engineer. This is a $50,000. We did the first phase, we've completed our Phase A for both of these plants that we call Columbia West River Wastewater and the Westview Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is Phase B. This is a planning phase to alleviate and abandon those plants and go gravity to two alternate systems, which would be Olmsted Falls and Neo-Sort. We won't be entering into those expenditures. This is an allocation of funds to my department. We'll follow up with purchase orders, and with that, we won't commence these engineering services until we have an agreement with Olmsted and an agreement with Neo-Sort, and I believe that was faxed to us today.
Should we have that agreement before we plan?
No. We need the money to be transferred to our account so that these can be started when the agreements are signed and approved.
If it's, my understanding is though that you'll have a second amendment, Commissioner, you'll be passing requisitions.
Aye, that's correct.
This is, this is nothing more than the allocation of funds in anticipation of getting a requisition to conduct these surveys, so you'll, you'll be seeing this once again. Correct?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to authorize North Ridge Road to be closed to one-way traffic during the Lorraine County Metropolitan Park District Pioneric Festival Days at September 7 and 8, 2002. This festival draws a large number of visitors to the area, and between vehicular and pedestrian traffic, North Ridge Road and Mill Hollow gets extremely congested. By closing the road to one-way traffic during the event hours of 11 a.m. to 6 p.m., the county will be able to reduce the possibility of an unfortunate accident. The park district has secured more than enough buses to efficiently handle the anticipated festival visitors.
Some move. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to award bid to Newell Equipment Grafton, Ohio in the amount of $64,348 to purchase a dump truck body for the county engineer's office, the engineer's estimate of $70,000. This was the only bid received, and funds are available in the Motor Vehicle Gas Tax Fund Heavy Equipment Account. The county engineer has reviewed and recommends approval.
Some move. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Sure. Aye.
Like to authorize the release and payment of retainage to RA Joseph Construction Incorporated in the amount of $4,640 for work performed on the City of Amherst Elevator Stair Addition to the Sand Spring Building Project. This was a CDBG-funded project. The contract is complete. The contractor has submitted the necessary paperwork.
Some move. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to approve and enter into a water, storage, and distribution facility lease agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the City of Alaria, Ohio, for 1.1475 acres on Murray Ridge Road, which includes elevated water tanks on the site.
Some move. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to approve and enter into contracts between the Board of Commissioners on behalf of the Children and Families Council and authorize payments as follows. The first one to nurturing parenting program by Catholic Charity Services of Lorraine County in the amount of $28,896. And B, it ain't love program by Lorraine County Safe Harbor Genesis House in the amount of $25,770. Funds are available from the Children's Trust Fund and will be in effect July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003. Need to authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
Some move. I'll second. Do we want?
Discussion?
Want to speak to this or not?
Good morning, Commissioners. Juan Molina Crespo, Director of the Lorraine County Children and Families Council. These are two contracts that were, these were two-year contracts. We've just finished the first year, and we'd like to enter into contracts for the second year with the same vendors. Just a little bit about the Catholic Charities Program regarding the parenting nurturing component. They primarily are going to be doing parenting skills around the issue, around the areas of parental behavior that lead to more healthy and positive developments between offspring and parent. It's to promote individual family and community strengths, that is where the parents interact with the churches, the schools, and other community areas, and also to provide information, health education services for the well-being of families and children. This particular component is being implemented both in Alaria and Lorraine, at the Poplar Street Site in Alaria and on the Eighth Street, Eighth Street Site in downtown Lorraine. Genesis House, the Innate Love Program is primarily to, it's a curricula-based program in the Lorraine County schools. The curricula, it helps to, helps young, young people from the ages of seven to 13 to identify when there are, to identify the kinds of relationships that they enter into. How to identify an unhealthy relationship, how to say no, how to be, how to develop a relationship around friendship and not around sexual activity and those kinds of issues. So, those are the overall tenants of this, of this program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to authorize Executive Director of the Children and Families Council to apply for, accept, and administer the Help Me Grow GRF funds for fiscal year 2003 in the amount of $272,920 for the period July 1, 2002 to June 30, 2003, and further to negotiate contracts with service providers for various services under the Help Me Grow Initiative.
Some move. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
And to award contract to Lake Erie Construction of Norwalk, Ohio, in the amount of $205,925 for the installation of guardrails at various bridge approaches. This was the only bid received. The engineer's estimate of cost was $221,186.72. Lake Erie proposes to begin work on or before August 2002 and to complete all work on or before October 2002. Funds for this project are being provided 100% from the federal CSTP funds through the Ohio Department of Transportation, and all invoices will be paid from the bond fund with reimbursement to the bond fund from ODOT. The county engineer has reviewed and recommends approval.
Some move. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd issue notice to proceed letter to Bay Mechanical and Electrical Corporation of Lorraine, Ohio for the Crest Haven Wastewater Treatment Plant Project effective July 1, 2002. The contract was awarded by Resolution Number 02379. It was adopted May 16, 2002.
Some move second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd advertise for bids to replace the Drunky Road culvert number 0183 in Storm Outlet in Eaton Township. The engineer's estimate of cost, $36,568.41. Bids will be received until 2:00 p.m. on Monday, July 15, 2002 here in the public hearing room. You need to publish the notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on July 1 and 8, 2002.
Some move second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd also advertise for bids for the City of Ammon Lake Handicapped Curb Rams Project. Estimate of cost, $21,000. This will be a CDBG-funded project. Bids will be received until 2:00 p.m. on Friday, July 19, 2002 in the public hearing room. You need to publish the notice in the Morning Journal on July 5 and 12, 2002.
Some move second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd like to approve and enter into various purchase of service contracts between the Board of Commissioners and the Workforce Development Agency with funding source available through the Workforce Investment Act. Contracts are effective July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003. The first one with Lorraine County Community College in Alaria, Ohio, for the operation of the Bridges to Success Program in the amount of $279,052. El Centro de Sergio Salsales Incorporated of Lorraine, Ohio, for the operation of the Project Conquest in the sum of $150,441.10. The Boys and Girls Clubs of Lorraine County in Oakland, Ohio, for the Work Readiness Skills Program for youth ages 14 to 21 in the amount of $98,227.74. And the Public Services Institute of Lorraine County Community College, Alaria, Ohio, to operate the Jobs for Ohio graduates, the JOC Program, in the amount of $175,958.70.
Some move second.
Discussion?
Commissioners, if you would allow, Mr. Hoag was here to speak a little bit on these programs.
Did you want to comment on them, Bill?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Bill.
These contracts are carryover contracts that began January 1 of this year through June 30 of this year. These are carryover contracts, and these are very successful programs serving our youth from ages 14 through 21 years of age. We're talking about 225 to 300 youth that's going to be served through all of these programs. They have all been successful. Our Youth Council has looked at these programs and rated them, as has our staff, and they are recommended for approval.
Now, I understand that while we tried to get everything in before July 1, we held up on a couple, couple contracts that we may be seeing next week because there was some
Yeah.
question on, as to the, the outcomes.
That's correct. There are, there are three contracts that we have held back, we're looking at a little bit closer, evaluating those contracts to make sure that they have been in compliance and will comply in the future.
Commissioners, they, last year a tool was developed to, lack of another term, to perform quality assurance with regard to the performance under the contracts. And a few of the folks that had submitted for repeat funding had some deficiencies in certain areas that we felt compelled to go back and take a strong look at and give them an opportunity to come up with a performance improvement plan. You'll be seeing those contracts in the coming weeks, but we felt that we had to do that due diligence before they were presented to the Board.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd to amend Resolution Number 01-1008, that was adopted November 1, 2001, approving and entering into a contract between the Board of Commissioners and the Workforce Development Agency with the funding source available through the Workforce Investment Act. This amendment is to reflect a change in the Provider in Item D from Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency to the Lorraine County Joint Vocational School, now in the amount of $65,446.
Some move second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd authorize the Board of Commissioners to file application to the State of Ohio to participate in the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Forming Program for Fiscal Year 2002 in the amount of $447,000 and authorize the, the President or Vice President to execute the application on behalf of the Board.
Some move second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd to approve the format for anti-displacement and relocation assistance for local governments, which is required by all grantees prior to funding whether or not demolition activities are planned in Lorraine County, Ohio. All replacement housing will be provided within three years of the commencement of the demolition or rehabilitation relating to conversion.
Some move second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, Commissioner's Number 32 is another one, like the earlier issue that we've handled through the requisition process that escaped my attention. There's no action required on this issue.
Thank you.
Number 33. I'd to approve and enter into contract with Second Generation Properties LLC of Cleveland, Ohio, for the creation of a pre-development program manual for the renovation of the New York Central Railroad Station located in downtown Alaria into an intermodal hub in the amount of $99,000. I'd authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
Some move second, but I would like to include in there the explanation of how this is going to be paid.
And as, as we should. For, for those who weren't here when we originally did this, because this is the contract itself, we adopted the proposal a few weeks ago. The general fund is advancing the money. We have been informed that the money is going to be reimbursed to a grant to Rain County Transit. So what we did, we said we did a $99,000 advance on the issue. So we should be recovering those funds. Until I have a check in hand, I won't say it's 100 percent guaranteed, but we have been informed from Transit that they have that funding coming to them. So right now, it is an advance and is recoverable.
Okay, but they're not guaranteed the, the funding from the state?
They have told me that they're eligible and have been told they have $100,000 to pay for the study.
They do have the $100,000 on hand?
I don't think they have it in hand, Commissioners. I think, as I said, they have been told that I know they've made, they've put in certain paperwork to gain that, that money. But, but to be certain, I don't, they don't have it in hand, no. Or I wouldn't have had to advance.
And they have no guarantee that they'll, they'll receive this?
With everything that's going on to state right now, I, I don't put a lot of stock in guarantees until a check arrives.
Is there anyone here from the Transit? Okay, I'd like to hold this until we get some, some type of guarantee that that might as well be returned to the county. Not only that, but is this the only agreement that they have? Because this looks like a fax. It's not real legible, and there are things in here that are hand-printed. So is there going to be another architect's agreement, or is this it?
That, that's pretty much it. There was some pending changes made suggested by the Prosecutor's Office. Commissioner, I, I guess I need to point out that the Board adopted the proposal and authorized the execution of, of the proposal in the last resolution. This is merely to ink the contract. This work is already underway based upon the last resolution.
How could they start the work without an agreement?
Because they, the Board adopted their proposal, and all the cost and associated scope of work was in the proposal. And at that time, Transit was in here, and everybody explained the urgency. They had a window that they needed to work under in order to potentially gain access to discretionary Transit funding with our state senators. And that's why the Board adopted the proposal, and it, they were informed at that time that the contract would follow. And the Board passed a resolution on that. I'm not sure who voted which way, but it was a
It's unanimous.
Positive resolution. The, at that point, Jerry was involved in discussion, and we indicated that a, a simple BIA, which that is, would follow, follow up at a future date. And that was, at that time, whether it was a majority or unanimous, I'm not completely sure of, but it was agreeable to the Board at that time.
Okay, I'd like to hold this until I can further review the, the resolution that was passed and get some better information, review this contract.
If I had a motion on the floor, how you withdraw?
Withdraw my motion. Who made the motion? Would you withdraw?
I just have a question. The work is already in progress. What does this do to the?
Well, I would like to see by, by the resolution how it was worded, how they started the work without an agreement.
The, the Board adopted their proposal. The, the cost was $94,000 for proposal and $5,000 of, of reimburseables. There was quite an extensive discussion out here with Transit was here. I believe Mr. Twining was also part of that discussion, and Mr. Ennis. And the Board was told that we had to begin and proceed immediately. Mr. Ferguson stood up and said that he had made the application for reimbursement of the, of the funds. We discussed the general fund advancing the money and to be reimbursed from Transit. Mr. Twining, maybe you have other recollections of that discussion if you'd like to assist.
The information you're presented, Mr. Administrator, is correct. The, Mr. Ferguson represented to this body that in order to make the application by, I believe it was the end of September, to get money for doing the actual work, we needed to move forward on this preliminary engineering work and investigation. And it was my understanding that the Board took an action to, to authorize that work, and that's why they're moving forward at this point.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll stick to the resolution. So maybe we could just hold this until the end of the meeting and maybe
Can you adjourn the resolution?
So that you can be comfortable with it.
Let's hold it right now.
You still have a motion and a second, don't you? Let's just delay the vote on it.
Okay.
Is that all right with you?
For, for now, yes.
Okay.
Resolution 34 then. I'd approve and enter into various contracts between the Board of Commissioners, administrative agent for the Lorraine County Children and Families Council for the fiscal year 2003 Help Me Grow Program effective July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003, and authorize payment for the services. Number one with Catholic Charities Service Corporation, Catholic Charities Family Center of Alaria, $109,972. Children's Development Center, $91,500. Community Health Partners Home Healthcare, $12,000. Alaria City Department of Health, $284,278. Lighthouse Family Services, also known as Family Services Association of Lorraine County Incorporated, $70,179. Listening Advantage, $23,000. Lorraine City Health Department, $266,133. Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services Incorporated, and Compass House Incorporated, $59,092. Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities, $63,000. Lorraine County General Health District, $128,880. Music Therapy and Richment Center Incorporated, $33,000. Neighbored House Association of Lorraine County, $185,366. Plum Creek Associates Incorporated, $41,500.
Some move second.
Discussion?
I have none. Did you want to speak in?
Ma'am, just to identify that Catholic Charities actually is $106,972.
$106,972 rather than $109?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other changes, Juan?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, I'd like to point out that I'm very pleased to tell you that we have all our contracts before July 1 this year. For CFC, as you know, over the previous years, we've had a problem getting all our contracts into place. And both Mr. Hoag and Mr. Crespo have worked very diligently to make sure that all their contracts are up here this year before the beginning of the new state fiscal year. So I commend them. It may sound like a simple task to people in the audience, but it is no simple task, especially when the state waits to the end. And of course, Mary Lou's contracts were always here beforehand, but they also do a tremendous job out there. So I want to point that out.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd to approve payment breakdown of NOACA dues for July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003.
Some move. I just received this information late yesterday.
And I apologize to you for that. If you allow me.
Go ahead.
Mr. Twining worked on this for a couple of days, and we have been working on this for a couple of weeks with the NOACA. They, they changed the Code of Regulations, and our Board approved that within the past year. And the Code of Regulations now allows for a dues increase that we have not had in the past 10 years. So based on that, NOACA is asking us to make a decision, I apologize, today because they need to send bills out the 1st of July. Their year is different than ours. And so we took the allocation, which goes to our county, and it was broken down in a very good fashion by Mr. Twining. He can speak to the issue if you would like. Mr. Twining?
Thank you, Commissioners. What we have tried to do with this allocation is take into consideration the 2000 census and the adjustment that NOACA made with its Code of Regulations. And we've tried to put some structure to this. I will note, as I go through this briefly, that there are, to my embarrassment, five corrections that somehow on the final printing didn't show up but are on my earlier printing. So if you have one here, I want to make sure the numbers are correct. We took basically populations, communities with populations less than 5,000, and are suggesting that some of those bills come in at $2 and $4. And when you try and, and collect from a village of Rochester $2 bills, and you're paying 37 cents in postage, and you send a letter out three or four times, it may be worth the effort for the Commissioners to go ahead and pay for small communities their dues. And we're suggesting that communities with less than 2,000 residents were being invoiced under this new criteria of the Code of Regulations. And as we present, less than $50, and we feel that it would be appropriate at this point for the Board of Commissioners to pay those dues on behalf of those smaller communities. We also, and for the Commissioners' sake, that part is in yellow on your spreadsheet that was sent over to you. Communities with a population of between 7, or 2,000 and 7,990, we are suggesting that that dues rate be established at 3 cents. Historically, over the last 10 years, based on the 90 population, it seemed to fluctuate, community to community in that size. Community from 2 cents to 5 cents. We're saying a flat fee of 3, 3 cents for each community with a population between 2,000 and just under 8,000 would be appropriate and get to the dues amount that NOACA is requiring from Lorraine County as a whole. For those communities with a population greater than 8,000 but less than 25,000, specifically 24,999, the dues appropriate would be 12 cents. For communities that are between 25,000 and 59,990, 20 cents, and that is in line with what has been paid in the past, 20 cents would be appropriate. For any Lorraine County community that is over 60,000 in population, they should be paying at a rate of 22.8 cents per resident as their share of the dues. In addition to that, we are suggesting that the Board of Commissioners pay the dues as the county organization at a rate of, I think it was 12 cents, yeah, 12.07 cents per resident for the entire county. That gets you slightly more than half. I think the actual number was about 51 or 52 percent of the total NOACA dues that would be paid there. We also made a slight adjustment, or are suggesting a slight adjustment for Grafton Village and Eaton Township. That adjustment is only $32, but that's to try and take into consideration the law that was changed on counting the prison population. Grafton Township, as you know, annexed that land, but then had the state law changed so that their population of inmates were not counted in Grafton Village's census numbers. And Eaton Township was still counted for having those residents. So bottom line is what we are suggesting, and the minor changes for the Commissioners that we have here that are typos, I believe. For Grafton Township, that is the first one in green, the population is 2,722 residents, and I have down that they were assessed at a 1.4 cents And I have down that they were assessed at a 1.4 cents, and that is not correct. The formula actually is 3 cents, as it should be, because they're over 4,000, so the $82 is correct for them. Sheffield Village with a population of 2,0949, again, it says that it was at 1.4 cents, and it's really, the calculation has been done at 3 cents, so that is their dues at 88 cents. Grafton Village, we're showing in the last column at $69, that $32 reflection is not shown in here. That should be at 101, which is what they paid in the previous year. And then Eaton Township should be assessed in this, in the blue, the third one down in the blue, at $1,059 based on their population. And that takes into consideration the rate that we are suggesting, as well as the adjustment for the prison population. And then the Board of Commissioners, we have listed here at 34,602, and that really should be 34,672. And that gets us to the $85,043 that NOACA is requiring. We've given you the spreadsheet that gives the population from smallest, basically, to the largest. We've broken it into about five categories that I've described. The smaller communities, the less population, the less likely that they will receive direct financial benefit from funding programs and highway projects through the NOACA agency, and the less likelihood that they will have direct representation onto the Board. We feel that this is in line with what has happened in the county since 1990. It is reflecting the population shifts that took care of. Some of the larger communities actually lost population, and their dues have basically, under this proposal, remained the same or shifted downward slightly. And we feel that this is a fair and reasonable approach for everyone and suggest that you take action. I think the dues are due July 1st.
The billings will go out except for their calendar year beginning July 1st. It goes to 6/30/03.
And if it's confusing to the audience or the Commissioners, it's because this is not a simple process to go through.
Oh, you mean it took a lot of time and effort? Thank you.
But I'd be happy to attempt to answer any questions that anybody may have.
I would just like to say that I think Ron started with the figures that were developed about in 1991 by this Board. And then he brought into the current census and upgraded a few things. So I think he did a fine job. I certainly thank you for that.
I know, I worked on the 91 one, and I know how hard it was, but I do want to thank Mr. Carney because before we did the last one, the engineer did not participate financially. And since Mr. Carney came on board, he agreed to assist the county. I think at that time, we started out with $10,000. Looks like you went up 1,000, Ken. So on behalf of the Board, we do appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. How much does this increase the county's portion?
County's portion increase actually came in at about 12%. It was less than 13%.
So about a little bit over, what, 3,000?
Yeah, the last year's dues that were paid by the county were $29,956. And we're proposing this year, if you adopt this, will be $34,672. And we also want, or I want to thank Mr. Carney because his dues have gone up from $10,000 to $11,793. Thanks, Ken.
Did you move on this? Okay, I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mrs. Vancy?
Hi.
Motion to approve and enter into contract between Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency and Workforce Institute of Lorraine County, Laryo, Ohio, effective July 1st, 2002 through June 30th, 2003, for the purchase of Workforce Investment Act service programs in the amount not to exceed $1,522,305.98. And authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Ogil's here to speak on this, and Mr. Barcheck is also here. And I think you also have a new procedure you want to unveil.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is a continuation of contract we have after the last two years with the Lorraine County Workforce Institute to be our program operators for our One Stop. We have it at the building on 254, the Coates Building. As you know, this program's been very successful these past few years. The employment network has been, I guess, highlighted throughout the state of Ohio for the good work that Jan and her folks have been doing there. This year, we are taking on a little bit more responsibilities, or the network is. The network is going to be now involved in our youth system, our youth effort here in the county. Past few years, they have not been playing that much of a role, but due to some changes that we see that's required for them, as far as we as concerned, we feel we need to take some action. I've been meeting with Mr. Cordez, and I've talked with Jan, and we think we have got together a pretty, very good system. Basically, it's a youth referral system. The way we operate right now, each of our contractors is responsible for their recruitment, testing, those kinds of activities, which really makes it very difficult for them. We would like to bring these activities in-house so our employment network, who has the staff and the expertise to perform these functions, to do this. That way, all our clients who are being recruited can be referred out to our service providers, take that burden off them, program will run a lot smoother. Jan, would you like to add anything more?
Okay.
Okay. Let me help you out, Bill. Commissioners, we're going to be doing centralized intake for youth services. In the past, everything was done in a dispersed manner through several different vendors. Everything will go through the One Stop now. The evaluation, the testing, and the individual service plans will be developed at the One Stop. And eligible participants will be sent into services that best meet their needs from the One Stop, rather than somebody who is providing a service telling that person that that's the service they need. All right? So what you're adding is you're taking the appearance of conflict out of it, you're adding a neutral element to effectively test and evaluate these service recipients and get them into a service that best meets their need, not just one that you happen to be providing. And I think this supports the goals of where it supports the goals of the One Stop.
That's right.
And it'll provide the maximum utilization and most effective utilization of our dollars and services in Lorraine County.
And also, it's, we won't be repeating the things we did under JTPA. We'll be moving closer to putting together a youth system here in the county.
Oh, Bill, while you're there, did you ever look into the computer? Was it you that was going to look into that?
The computers for the...
Repairing the computers, or children repairing computers?
Yes. Matter of fact, you sent over a VCR tape, I believe.
Yes.
On that. I looked at that. Community College, Under the Bridges to Success Program is doing something very, very similar to that with many of the youth that are attending that program right now. Make a long story short, the youth that goes through their program and completes successfully, they will be, they'll be given a laptop computer.
Do they put it together, break it down, and put it together, or whatever?
No, that's not in that program. But they do go through programs for computer repair and those kinds of things. That specific computer that they're getting, they, you know, they don't tear that apart or anything like that. They'll put that back together.
So really, it's not similar because the other, the program that I was talking about is where the child takes the computer, puts it all together, and that's how they receive the computer. Of course, they have to have so many hours of homework accomplished also.
Right. We used to operate one of those programs under the old JTPA program. I'm very familiar with the program you're talking about.
So what kind of training do the children get under this program that they now have?
The Bridges to Success Program? The Bridges to Success Program that Lorraine County Community College is operating, it serves about 90 to 100 youth every year. The services that they receive are tutorial services to remain in college, GED, but anything to help them remain in college, to get pre-employment training, how to do interviews, those kinds of activities. Computer repair.
And they receive the computer after?
Yes, they do. Not every single one, just the ones who are enrolled in that curriculum. They receive a laptop computer. But it's not tied to, you know, tearing a computer apart and then putting it back together and then it's yours.
Can we have both programs? It seems to me like if they can tear a computer apart, that's achieving something. Not tearing it apart, really, they assemble it.
Assemble it.
Tearing it apart is nothing, and anybody could tear one apart, I'm sure it's...
And that depends upon if the council, youth council, you know, sees that those kinds of things, program is necessary, or if a provider approaches the council for that kind of programming.
Why don't we make a, have this person make a presentation to the youth council? I mean, at one time, we talked about having them come up and make a presentation.
The director from the other county that has this program in place?
Sure.
She'd be willing to come out here because she told me she...
Do you think we could facilitate at least having some discussion with the youth council to see if they want to pursue further developing this resource in our community?
Sure. Those are the kind of things, you know, that we would have to, you know, meet with our employment network to see what the youth coming in, what their needs are, what their aptitudes are. But, you know, we could facilitate that.
Well, it's just that technology is here, and it is the future. And that would give the kids an incentive to get involved with furthering their involvement with computer equipment.
Sure. I agree with that.
Okay. Would you set that up with her, Bill? I think you have all the information.
I have the information. I will take care of that.
And let me know when it is. I'd like to attend that meeting.
I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Vancy?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi. And I'd just like to say that I think that sounds like an exciting new step towards being more organized in Lorraine County. I want to applaud all the department heads and the county administrators who are involved in this process. Thank you.
Okay. Comments, reports? Mr. Cordez, Administrator?
I have a couple of things. We received a letter, or at least the President, the Board did, from Lorraine County Board of Mental Health. As you may be aware, we're under some new requirements to put levy ballots, put forward the issues on the ballot. One of the things we have to do prior to the Board even voting on whether to put them on is to certify availability of funds. And there's a resolution that the prosecutor...
I'll read that one.
Okay. I don't know, Madam Clerk, do you have one? Would you pass my copy to Madam Clerk? Since we're not meeting next week and the week after that, Commissioner, I believe Commissioner Vancy, he'll be out, just in case we don't meet that week. Of course, we're down to two. You never know what's going to happen. I don't want to let this opportunity go by for mental health, so I would ask that the Clerk read the resolution. Also, with your understanding, this will come back to you once the certification of the funds is made by the auditor. It will come back to you for a vote of whether you want to put it on the ballot or not. This is nothing more than just getting the funds certified, or at least the dollar levels that are going to be collected. Excuse me.
The funds that they certify will be based on a renewal or replace... No, this is going to be more than likely based on a replacement.
I think they're asking for the, as I say, replacement there?
Yes, this is a replacement.
It'll be based on replacement, whatever it says in the resolution.
Okay. I need to know that there is a need for replacement because that increases.
Yes. That'll all come back to you again before it goes on the ballot. This is just to get the order to produce the numbers and certify what the collections will be, and then it'll have to come back to you for your approval going on the ballot.
Okay. Can we get two figures, one on a renewal and one on the replacement?
Why don't we ask for both in this resolution?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, if you would read, when you read the resolution, if you would modify that for renewal and/or replacement.
Is this a six mil?
Point six mil. I think we can ask for both, can't we?
Yes, we are going to.
That's a good idea. Mr. Twining has just recommended an excellent idea. Why don't we do one resolution for the replacement, one resolution for the renewal?
Two separates?
Two separate resolutions.
Okay.
Shall I read the document?
Read it, read the way it is.
A resolution requesting that the county auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.03, certify to the Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County, Ohio, the total current tax valuation of Lorraine County and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by .6 mil for the purpose of mental health services and facilities under 5705.221. Such levy will be a replacement and can be placed on the ballot at the November 5th, 2002 election.
Also move. Second.
My discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mrs. Vancy?
Hi.
And a resolution requesting the county auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.03, certify to the Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County, Ohio, the total current tax valuation of Lorraine County and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by .6 mils for the purpose of mental health services and facilities under 5705.221. Such levy will be a renewal and be placed on the ballot at the November 5th, 2002 election.
So move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vancy?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Commissioners, the only other issue for a levy that I believe is coming forward this year will be for 911. And when the Budget Director's back, he and myself and Ms. Jones will be meeting. We've already had some, a few discussions on what we want to present to the Board, but you'll be seeing that very shortly. Obviously, we have to have that done, and everything has to be over to the Board elections by August 22nd, I believe. But we wanted to present a very unified picture before we act for the certification from the auditor for 911. Other than, I don't think that we're going to be seeing any other ones. This is some of that I've been aware of for the November ballot.
Okay. I would suggest, too, that when we get these levies, that we get reports from the agencies requesting that we put the levy on the ballot stating exactly what the revenue is generated from whatever percentage, whatever mils they're now receiving, and what their expenditures are.
And that's what the renewal will tell us. The renewal will give us the exact valuation they're receiving right now.
But we need to know what their expenditures are, too, so that we could see what the bottom line is.
Certainly. I think we should get that before we allow them to go on the ballot.
Exactly.
And I'll make sure that happens, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
I'll give you a little bit of bad news, and we'll go to some good news. Our 911 project has ran into a bit of a glitch, EMA 911. As we're getting close to completing that project, we started working on the back parking lot behind 911 EMA. It's the new lot. When they were going down to compact the soil, they weren't able to get good compaction, and they had to dig some trenches trying to figure out why we weren't able to compact the soil. Unfortunately, the first trench we dug, we ran into an old foundation on the property that wasn't identified anywhere. The second trench we dug, we ran into some old sanitary sewers that were on the property that weren't identified.
Still functioning?
Well, they were still rather full. I don't know if they were functioning, but they were certainly holding some waste, which proceeded to run right down into our trench. So we're going to require a change order on 911, and I would like to say that this is totally unforeseen, not to exceed $18,000 so that we may continue to finish up this I'll let you take a look at that for a moment.
What will they do with the foundation?
Well, they'll tear it up.
That's all going to be removed?
They'll, apparently, it was filled with, backfilled with loose debris... They'll, apparently it was filled with, backfilled with loose debris that needs, it all need to be taken out and excavated, the walls will be taken out, it will be removed. The septic system, on-site septic system, has to be removed, and then everything has to be backfilled and compacted.
It does say that the excavation was of an abandoned sanitary sewer.
Well, it is, I didn't-
I just, I just wanted to know if it was function- In other words, my question was, do we cut into a sewer line that we were using?
Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Yeah.
No, we didn't cut into one that was being used, but this one was full. In order to get a, to get a good look at what people were telling us, we did ask Mr. Carney's folks to come out, and if you look in the letter, it does say that they also came out. We asked our in-house folks to assist us with that, and I wanted to thank Mr. Carney for sending somebody out and to help us out.
Who's going to be doing this work?
The name of the contract escapes me, it's the person that has the work on the pipeline already.
Okay, are they the people that have been working out there?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Are we pretty rough, any stunted in this?
We're getting close, Commissioners. The project is going well, going along well, and we've been tackling a lot of small issues that become pragmatic towards the end, some minor discussions on various swapping of change orders and so forth, but I'm, we're getting very close. I anticipate a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We'll probably wait until we're 100% up and functioning. We had some issues with getting the canopy, it was slow to arrive, so within the next few weeks, we will probably be doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony down there, inviting the public, having another nice ceremony for the public to come view their, their new facility in the county.
Jim, is this going to be paid for out of 911, or is this part 911 general fund for EMA?
It'll be the split that we arrived on.
It's still going to be the split?
Mm-hmm.
Let the record reflect that then, too, would you please?
Right, total cost will be whatever that we, we had come up with some percentage numbers that we were using. When all said, we'll be, we're advancing the money to 911 right now, so in effect, we'll be billing ourselves, because we do control the 911 levy monies, but right now, the general fund is advancing, and then we'll be putting the 911 on a repayment schedule to the general fund.
Should we ask for the change order and the amount not-
Not to exceed $18,000.
So move. Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
We have been working with Columbia Township trustees and Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District on behalf of the trustees to try to gain an agreement to accept the waste flow from Columbia Township. One of the requirements from Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer was that we establish a tributary service area for Columbia Township. We have a proposal from K. McCarthy and Associates to undertake that study. Just this morning, I had this on the agenda and I removed it, but just this morning, we received some information from Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer, so I have to ask Mr. Carney, is this, was this in reply to our discussions yesterday concerning Mr. Pugh? Has he gotten back to you?
Yes, thank you. Numerous phone calls were made late yesterday afternoon. Left a message about 6:00 PM on his recorder, we got this fax to you this morning. Worked out pretty smooth. Because your meetings are holiday-oriented, they're going to be looking at the 18th or even later to have this approved, so.
Right, so-
It's a pretty strong request from the township trustees to accomplish this on their behalf.
I, I'm pretty comfortable, Ken, Ron Twining, myself, Wayne Bishop, were at a, well, ended up being a second meeting with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. I'm pretty comfortable that they're very interested in accepting a sewage flow from Columbia Township, but they want to see a plan. Now, I know how uncomfortable this makes the board, because we have to do, we have to spend some money before we have a place to send flow and waste, but we can't send it without a plan, because they won't give us a contract without a plan. In order to undertake this tributary service area study, and I'll pass this to you, it's going to cost, I think it's approximately $21,000.
$900 was on the original agenda that you removed it from.
So we run into the chicken and egg situation, no chicken, no egg, and if you don't have the egg, you never get a chicken, but we, in order to be able to assist those folks in Columbia Township and to try to bring about an agreement on behalf of the request by the trustees, we do need to do this study, or we will get no further with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District whatsoever. This is one of their caveats that they must have before they'll sit down in true earnest and hammer around an agreement. And I would ask if Mr. Carney or Mr. Twining has anything to add, they're free to do so.
Does this have to be done today?
This was on the agenda of the draft, and when he took it off, because he didn't have the letter, and that's the letter he's talking about that they got.
Well, I got a specimen copy of the contract.
That's even better.
It's not a total draft, it just basically tells us all the things that we're going to have to do with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. I take this as a good faith effort upon their part to try to work with us. I did give them the, my review of the political flavor and climate of doing sewer projects in this county, and told them that we wanted something to hang our hat on, that we were working under a very good assumption that we were going to have a meeting of the minds, not that we expended taxpayers' dollars and then somebody had selective amnesia about discussions, and we didn't consummate a relationship. I feel very comfortable that we're close with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer, and as you know, the trustees in Columbia Township are facing some serious annexation issues over there, and they're very, very concerned, and they have taken a stand with regard to sewers, and they have expressly asked us to get a arrangement with somebody to take that, specifically, they did address Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer, and I believe, once we have that agreement, you will see that they will be providing us with a position paper and request on areas that they would like to support having sewed in Columbia Township, so that they can maintain good local control and try to limit the extent of annexation of township lands into neighboring incorporated areas.
Well, will this study focus in on certain areas?
It'll-
Or is it going to be the entire township? I see Mr. Rondell is here, township trustee from Columbia Township. Maybe you would like to make some comments, or maybe you know where the study is going to focus.
Good morning. At the present time, I don't know. We did have a conversation with Mr. Cortez before. I know, not this January, but January before, when I was talking with Mr. Pugh, he wanted for us to lay out the entire township, how he wanted the sewage to go, or where we wanted the sewage to go. And I believe this is similar to what he wants now.
That's correct.
Who is he?
Ken Pugh is the director of Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
Assistant director.
Assistant director, I'm sorry.
Assistant, Mr. Odeos, director. But that's where we're standing on it, and as you know, we joined LARCO, we had a petition remonderance, which took us out, so now we have no place to go but the county if we want to get any type of sewers.
I believe we also have quite a partnership going between all of us to, for the betterment of the community over there, but this is the next step towards achieving success in that area, and once we have the agreement, then we will sit down with the trustees and we will come up with a plan that meets the immediate needs of maintaining the integrity of the township boundaries.
So actually, what are we going to be paying for here, for the entire township or just a certain area?
Ken, would you please respond to that?
It's the entire township, Mary Jo. The study needs to be accomplished, as Mr. Cortez mentioned, that the tributary service area presented to Mr. Pugh. That's priority one, prior to having the contract signed between the county and Northeast, we'll call it neo-sort.
So will Northeast accept the sewage from the entire township?
It's been designed for that, quite frankly. I believe there's a 78-inch sewer at the northeast corner of Columbia Township presently, so it's been designed for that. This is a requirement to enter into an agreement, to enter into that system. Your original question, yes, it's the entire township, there'll be preliminary drawings made showing where the trunk lines will be sized accordingly. Tributary areas in terms of priorities entering into the system, and that needs to be accomplished prior to the agreement being signed.
And we're pretty comfortable that Northeast will accept all this sewage?
He did send us a draft agreement this morning, and I imagine that, as Mr. Cortez mentioned, I agree, that's a very strong, good faith effort on Mr. Pugh's part. This organization is extremely large, and we're pleased to have this type of response so quickly.
Very good. Okay, I would move, and that would be for 21-9?
I'm sure she's that.
Okay. To enter an agreement between the Board of Commissioners and K. E. McCartney and Associates for professional engineering services for the Columbia Township Regional Sewer Study in an amount not to exceed $21,900. This study will need to be completed so the county can enter into an agreement with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District to provide sewer service for Columbia Township as requested by the township trustees.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Do you need this back, Eddie?
Do you want this, Jim, or this is yours, or who says this is what you gave us?
Why don't you get back to me? I have to see the budget department about exactly where we're going to fund this from. Most likely, you'll be seeing a transfer from unappropriated funds next week to, the week after to support this.
I figured we'd do that.
Right, this'll get us going.
[laughing]
We'll find a pocket of money somewhere. Mr. Ochs went on vacation, took the county wallet with him somewhere.
He did not, he left Sheldon holding it.
Okay.
He's got it in her purse.
She has the county pocketbook.
At a cop?
I'll conclude with informing the commissioners that, as I've talked to you, I will be on vacation for the two weeks after tomorrow, so Mr. Foote will be acting in my behalf during my absence. And that would conclude my remarks today, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Nacani, prosecutor, Mr. Flanagan?
I have no reports this afternoon.
This afternoon? Isn't it quite noon yet, Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to remind anybody, if you have to move your car, please think about it. Depends on what time he came in.
There you go. That's great. Okay, Commissioners report?
I have none.
I have none this morning.
An oral business? We need a resolution to authorize payment from the County General Fund mandated share payable, excuse me, let me change my tape. Sorry. Authorized payment from the County General Fund mandated share payable to the Lorain County Department of Job and Family Services in compliance with the Higher Revised Code Section 5101.16 through 510.161 as follows. July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003, payment from the general fund will be $104,995.50 per month for July 2002 through May 2003, $104,995.50 for the month of June 2003. A minimum of an additional 5% of the state of Ohio certified amount for the county share of $1,259,935 for fiscal year 2002 would be appropriated to the general fund public assistance grants line item for the 2003 calendar budget year.
So move.
Second, but I just have a couple of questions. Number one, I don't recall why this is under old business, and then I do have a question about the wording of the minimum of additional 5%, just exactly what does that mean?
Okay, let me field this, I may be able to field any part of this, and I'll have to turn for assistance. It actually probably shouldn't be a piece of old business. What happened was, it was on an agenda, I believe, a week or two ago, and there was some questions on to, as to the proper formula being used to make the, to decide on the dollar level of the appropriate local dollars, and therefore, it was taken off at the last minute of the agenda, but I don't know that it was ever on the final draft of the board's agenda, so it may not have been an old piece of business, because you may not have seen it. I don't recollect, Madam Clerk, do you recollect if, it actually, I don't know that it actually got to the board, I think it may have been taken off before that, so that may be the reason why you don't recognize it as a piece of old business. And the second part of your question, Commissioner?
A minimum of an additional 5%, and then there's an amount of $1,200 and something. Just exactly what does that mean?
I know Mr. O'Connell worked on this with the ODHS folks. Mary Lou, would you like to field it, or would you?
While you're coming up, I guess that my real question is, is this a million dollars, or is the million dollars part of the total? It's a little confusing.
Right. The old language that was tabled, I believe, just addressed the 104 per month. We had a meeting with Shelley and David. This is all due to the state auditor that's been in our building for six weeks auditing our books, and they, and they pointed out to us that the ORC requires the commissioners to appropriate not only the mandated share, but an additional 5%, which is about $65,000. So we had a discussion, and we got clarification, which I believe we shared with the budget department, and basically, the commissioners have to forward to the department the 104 on a monthly basis, but then in January, they just have to appropriate the additional 5%, but base, and that would be held in reserve in case our department would need additional funds, but we've always made a real effort to live within our allocation, so we've never asked for the additional funding, but the ORC allows for the additional 5%, so that's why the 125 million.
Okay.
Or 125,000 per month.
But thank you for the clarification, that really, in essence, this is only $65,000 additional, the total, is the total $1,259,000?
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, Shelley probably does.
Well, it says the county share of $1,259,935. Is that the total?
That's the certified mandated share for that fiscal year, yes.
And then you would add the 65 on top of it?
The 65 would be additional.
Okay.
Only on incorporated areas.
Okay, well, I just wanted to fully understand that. Thank you for the explanation.
Mary Lou, excuse me, but if that money's not used by your department, does it return to the general fund?
Yes, it never leaves the general fund.
Thanks.
Right, based upon their good history over there, it's doubtful that that won't happen, so.
What, it won't come back?
No, that it won't be spent.
I know.
Oh, you're bad.
I was being facetious.
Oh, you sure. I'm sorry. Thank you for the explanation.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Any other old business?
I have none.
New business?
I'm with the reading.
Oh, excuse me. No, I have the-
Sorry.
We certainly do, sorry.
Couple items.
Well, I guess we do.
Discussion on the county building codes for unincorporated areas?
Good morning once again, or good afternoon, Commissioners.
Now it's good afternoon.
My name is Ron Twining, T.W.I.N.I.N.G., I'm the Community Development Director for the Board of Commissioners. We are here this morning under new business, not to lengthen your day, but to ask for a request. In 1998, when I came back to the county, one of the discussions that was confronting us was the need for residential building codes in certain parts of our unincorporated areas for single-family- areas for single-family R1, R2, and R3 family dwelling units. As you know, commercial, industrial, and anything above R3, thanks.
Were they all waiting for it?
Anything above R3. See you, Watson. Would anybody else like?
Yes.
Even Shirley?
I don't know.
Anything above R3 is already covered under the building codes in all unincorporated areas anyways. It's the residential 1, 2, and 3 family dwelling units that are not covered. During the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, several discussions went on, and that recommended, that document recommended, that the county adopt building codes based on the ABOWA building codes. And then if and when a township decided that they wanted building codes at their local level, they would pass their own local township resolution adopting the county building codes. The reason that that has to be done, under Ohio state law, the township can't initiate the adoption or writing of building codes on their own. They can only adopt codes that are already in place at a municipality or a county level. Our concern, and the concern of the citizens that worked with us on the land use plan, was we didn't want townships necessarily adopting three or four from Adana City, three or four from Brunswick, three or four from Lorraine, one or two from Oberlin. We wanted to have a consistent building code throughout all of Lorraine County. So the recommendation was for us to adopt the ABOWA building code. Since 2000, we have, as a staff, been having several meetings, some with selected people from the township areas, elected officials from some of the townships, to see what their needs are. We concentrated primarily on the townships that were interested most in the possibility of building codes. We have also met with North Coast BIA and some of their members, specifically talking about building codes in the county. And we feel that we have now come to a point where we have a working draft that was originally submitted to the Board of Commissioners either late April or early March. This document refers, it's our procedure and policy manual, setting up the building codes, and it refers back to the ABOWA building codes, which are the state regulations. Several communities have also worked with us. Aleria in particular, Jerry Klein, and his office has been very helpful. What we are suggesting for the Board of Commissioners, that we adopt a division for Lorraine County, a Building Department Division. It can be placed either under the County Health District, the County Engineer, or under the Commissioners directly. We are suggesting at this point that we adopt this division under the Community Development Department at some later date. As it grows, it may become a department in and of itself. We would, if approved, suggest that the Board of Commissioners hire a building official. Initially, it would be on a part-time basis, and it can be a retired person or an individual that's already working in another identified location, but this is a state-certified individual to oversee building operations and building codes and the ABOWA for residential. This person could also obviously be certified in commercial and some that already exist. Under the building official, and that building official, our suggestion is that that would be a cost borne by the General Fund of the county, and that person would directly work under our supervision and be an employee of the Board of County Commissioners. Under that individual, they would then have several experienced building inspectors that would be trained to go out and actually visit the sites and make sure that the builders and contractors have laid the dimensions out properly and are constructing according to the ABOWA codes, everything from plumbing, electrical, masonry, all of the aspects. But it's the building inspectors that would work under the building officials. We feel that the building inspectors can be contracted individuals, retired individuals, contracts. We feel, we've had several discussions with existing city departments in Lorraine County, that we could probably have some success entering into a contractual arrangements with local cities on building inspectors, and that would be reimbursed by the fees charged to the builder or homeowner that is doing the actual work. Again, we are suggesting at this point that we adopt the 1996 ABOWA building codes. There is a 1999 ABOWA code, but the feelings that we were hearing from several of the cities, 99 was a bit of a shift, and it shifted some of the paradigms, and probably those codes weren't the cleanest, and so they're being adopted. We would suggest that you go with the 96. They're easier to follow, easier to enforce and understand. And as soon as the ABOWA codes, the 99, are adjusted and modified, probably in 2002 or 2003, we would then have you adopt those as a replacement to the 96. In order to do that, and I am coming to the end, in order to do all of this, the first thing that the Commissioners, once you have a comfort level, that you will need to do, you will have to advertise and hold two public hearings where we can present this to the public and get further feedback and comments. We feel at this point, if the Board of Commissioners would like a work session so that we can answer any questions, we would be happy to do that. If you're willing to go forward with a, with the scheduling of the two public hearings, we would like to know that so that we can begin this. We have probably seven townships that have not said that they would adopt the codes, but seven of the 18 townships are interested enough that they are going to watch this through and seriously consider passing a local resolution once the Commissioners pass this. Now, if we only get three or four, that's not a bad thing, because that means we can gear up this department slowly, rather than trying to take care of 2/3 of the geographic region of Lorraine County. So we think that it's a good thing that we are ramping this up, so to speak, rather slowly. The question becomes, do you want a work session? Do you feel you have adequate information and that we can answer questions at these two public hearings that would be held in front of the Board of Commissioners in this room at a future date? And we do have a request that we move rather quickly. Our last meeting with the townships as a whole, when we presented this to them, was in the middle part of February of this year. We met with the BIA folks in March and April, and we have been more or less refining things, and we're at the point now where Rebecca Jones, who has worked on this directly, Kelly Glenn, the Assistant Director for the Department, and I are recommending that we answer any questions the Commissioners may have, and hold, schedule and hold the two public hearings in order to hopefully pass these building codes for the county.
Ron?
Yes.
Did I hear you correctly, that you said there's 17, seven out of 18 townships that are interested in this?
Yes.
Okay, I think before we have a public hearing, that what we're going to have to do is figure out who's going to pay for the employee that's going to, the Building Department Inspector.
The Inspector.
You indicated that there were several ways we could go. Either the individual, the developer, or the person putting the home up could pay for the expense of this person going to view that particular project. Or we could go through one of the cities?
Okay.
And use their employee?
I was probably not as clear as I needed to be. We have, first of all, two employees that need to be hired. There is one individual that's the building official. That person, we are recommending clearly be an employee and paid out of the county's general fund. No subsidy will be provided under our scheme from fees assessed to the builders. That's the building official. That person will be on a part-time basis. The other, there will be several building inspectors. They can even be properly trained zoning inspectors at the local level. They can be certified contractors from other communities that are certified to come in and inspectors. Those will be paid under our plan by the fees charged to the builder or the homeowner doing the renovation. So that part we're clear on. That will be not subsidized by the County General Fund at all. That will be fee-based, fee-driven. What I was probably not as clear as I needed to be, my, our attempt was that rather than hiring three or four zoning inspectors and not knowing whether they would be busy eight hours a day, five days a week, or whatever the case is, we have had several conversations with cities, cities of Aleria, Lorraine, Oberlin, North Ridgeville, others that have building inspectors, and the Commissioners could enter into an agreement with those communities for a flat fee basis to have their inspectors go out. Right now, we use, in the evenings and weekends, a building inspector from the city of Aleria to do our CDBG housing. We pay him $45 each visit that he goes out. And that would be the same similar thing. We wouldn't have somebody that is just simply on a part-time basis, waiting only for the county to work. They would probably be independent agents that would, on a schedule and for a set fee, we would call them up. Aleria may call them up. Grafton may call them up, so that there will be a sharing of those inspectors, and we would clearly lay this out and do that by contract as a independent contractor for the county. And that way, we can regulate the cost and hold the cost down, both to the builders and to the homeowners.
I am not in favor of expanding the size of government, so I'm not real sure if I'm in favor of this. And when I'm hearing you say that there's only seven townships out of the 18 that are interested in this, I'm wondering what the real need for it is, and why we would have to hire a building official, why even part-time. I would think that a building inspector is needed, and I would think that we could work with one of the cities to hire someone as needed. That's just my opinion, and if you can comment on my opinion, I would like to hear it.
We have wrestled as a staff with some of those same issues among ourselves, and I can't say that your concerns are totally wrong. I will say that at this point, this is where I'm at. You have townships that are experiencing heavy growth. You have townships that have 9,000, 11,000 people. You have villages and cities that are smaller than those. They have building departments. Townships don't. I heard a story. I assume that it may have been embellished slightly, but it's a story that probably drove the point home to me that those townships that are experiencing growth and that don't have 2,000 residents, but rather 9,000 residents, that they may actually have a need for building codes, and that the county needs to help them out. The story went like this. Couple moved out of Cuyahoga County, built about a $200,000, $280,000 house in a township, and on a Thursday started moving in, had all their friends and neighbors help them move in Saturday evening about 6:00. Everything was open, set down. They opened up the bottle of wine, just the husband and wife, and sit in front of the fireplace to say, boy, we're exhausted, but this is our dream home. We have met all of the needs that we possibly could, only to find themselves about 45 minutes later, out by the road, watching their new house that had not been insured yet go up in smoke because the contractor had no building code requirements. And under the slab of the fireplace, they had put an inadequate amount of protection so that when they lit the fireplace, the floorboard, the subflooring caught on fire, and it burned to the ground. The building officials, the builders, BIA, actually have told us that it was their suggestion that we do approve building codes, so that there is a standard building model that's followed, and at the same builders, whether you're doing it on the weekend as a hobbyist or a certified builder that's trying to make a career out of that, build to the same standards. So that somebody that lives in Avon is asked to go build a house in Brighton Township, they know exactly that the same house they would build in Avon is going to be built in Brighton, and that their competition isn't going to cut corners and put two-by-four studs at 24 or 26 inch because nobody's looking. They're all going to build them at the standard 16-inch centers, and we're going to end up with a better product that is not going to increase the cost of the house when you consider the effect of shoddy homes sometimes increase the insurance value, increase your risk of fire and hazards long-term. So we're of the opinion, at this point, while we share your concerns, that we don't need necessarily bigger government. This may be a case where Lorraine County's seeing development, at least to the east and north in our unincorporated areas. And if those places are going to be supported as unincorporated communities and not forced into becoming incorporated, because that is an incorporated area, they can adapt their building codes. But if they want to remain unincorporated, the county should sit here, in our opinion, and help them do what they need for their, in these cases.
Am I hearing you say that a township cannot adopt their own, or adopt a code that you have put together?
They can adopt.
They can do it?
They can adopt one that the county has or that another city has. They cannot go out by themselves. Columbia Township, I think, are still here. Columbia Township could not go out if the county does nothing. They could not go out and pull together some of their residents and say, you know, here's the ABOWA building code. Let's put in these criteria and issues.
But they can adopt what?
But they can adopt with the county.
Okay, so the county can adopt this, and then it would be up to the individual township to adopt it. Then it's up to the individual township to worry about the building inspector, isn't it? I mean, how can we just force somebody on them?
You could do that. Our concern there, Commissioner, is the fact that you wouldn't have consistent inspection. You still need one building.
You'd have to, if this is the code, they would have to inspect with this code.
But you would still need one building official overhead of all of those inspectors, and that's what you're going to have here. We would have, and we've already had some conversations with certified inspectors that say, well, you know, I live in Columbia Township, I would like to do inspections on electrical work in Columbia Township and Eaton, but no place else, because I primarily work in Cuyahoga County. We would make those arrangements in order to get good inspection. So you would have people working in specific townships. They would be acceptable to those townships. But I think that you need somebody overall, rather than individual.
Okay. Knowing how the budget is right now, I have to ask you, do you have the funding in your budget to provide another employee?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. The subject of having a county-wide building code has been, is at least a 34-year-old subject. We've talked about having a building code in Lorraine County for over 34 years. And the other thing I'd like to point out is, in your letter, you said the Comprehensive Land Use Plan called for the adoption of the ABOWA codes by the county. And then I have one question. Yesterday, I received a letter from the Building Industries Association, and it's kind of confusing to me because I thought that we had garnered their support, and this letter says that you are aware of this, that at the state level, there is similar legislation being introduced that includes both a model code bill and builder licensing.
I'm aware that for the last, I think it's three or four years, that legislation has always been introduced along those lines, but it has not been passed. If they have information that it's going to be passed in 2002, that's information that I do not have.
Well, I think that's quite what the information is, but I think that this letter is unclear, and apparently you didn't get a copy of it.
I did not see a copy.
It's on the side.
I was working on the whack-a-doo, so maybe staff had it.
You're just trying to tell us you were busy yesterday. I'll make a copy of this and share it with you.
Jim Nickeloff is the Chair of the BIA Code Section, and we've worked close with he, Ron Schweckenwald, and the folks at BIA. We've had at least two meetings where we actually have had about anywhere from 20 to 30 builders. Are they looking forward to this? No. But are they looking forward to having a consistent house? But are they looking forward to having a consistent house in Lorraine County? I believe the answer is yes. We've worked out all of their concerns, I think, to their satisfaction. They were the ones that really insisted that we adopt the 96 building codes rather than the 99, so we feel we have done due diligence. And frankly, I have plenty of other things to be working on. I don't need to champion building codes. I just think that it's the appropriate thing to do for the county at this point.
And I appreciate those comments, especially in view of the fact that this issue has been unresolved for over 34 years. So I guess that we need to carry this for further discussion.
Yes, and I'm going to send a letter to township trustees. I want to know how they feel about it, too.
Okay.
And if we have public hearings, we'll sure find out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay. Next item on our new business, this is just for information that the Aleria Township and the City of Aleria, Ohio, the Joint Economic Development District, JED contract, including map and property owners, along with the JED Schedule 1 and 2, were filed with this office on Thursday, June 13, 2002.
Okay, so that's excellent, is it not? We have the signed agreement?
We have.
You asked, you had that, how many pages is that? A few?
Yeah, a couple.
I'd like a copy of it.
Everybody should have one, I can get you another one.
Well, where would I have gotten it?
Me, through Joyce.
You mean, maybe she has it and I haven't seen it yet?
Yeah, she probably does.
Okay, thanks.
But I can get you another one.
Thank you, Ron.
Any other new business? Board of Commissioners?
This time, I'll move the reading. Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vansy?
Aye.
Public comment?
Yes. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Bob? Okay. Bob?
There was one outstanding item, item number 33.
Wait, I just have Teresa bring a copy.
Pardon me?
You want to wait a second? I'll have Teresa bring that copy, the resolution. On number 33, we have an overhaul for second generation proposal.
Oh.
You want to wait a second?
Somebody should.
You want to see the resolution that we approved, unless you just want to?
Can we just take a five-minute break?
Okay.
Okay? Is that right with you? Sure. For, to review this here? This is one issue?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we're going to take, well, you want to move for the five-minute break? Or just take it?
We're taking a five-minute break.
Just take five minutes.
Okay.
Well, you want to reconvene?
Yes.
The Commissioners have reconvened from the five-minute recess?
Yes.
We're discussing item number 33 on the agenda, we had placed on hold.
Okay, I did get a copy of the resolution, and I noted that I was absent at the meeting when the request for funding was approved. And I did ask if we have anything in black and white stating that the county would be reimbursed for the $99,000, and we do not.
No. And I am not able to, at this time.
To guarantee?
Guarantee, or I've called Mr. Ferguson. He is out, he's unavailable today, and I've been trying to reach Ms. Moore, and she is in but out of the office, and I'm not able to reach her either. The only thing that I have is from Transit that they've been guaranteed $100,000 for the initial phase of this project. And you know how circumspect I am about making guarantees to you, Commissioner, when I don't have it myself.
Correct.
So what I have for you is their assurance that we are getting $100,000 reimbursed for this study, and they're.
Do they have the funding to back that up?
Well, we provide the bulk of their funding.
Right, but I want to know if they put it aside.
I guess that I, I just.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kennedy? I talked to him earlier this summer, and he told me that Transit had the money to pay for this. So I talked to Tom Ferguson, and he talked about $100,000 allocation that they have in a specific, I thought it was a set-aside. I can't guarantee you that that money is there, but they, I think that it's money that they have received from a grant that specified for specific things, but I don't.
It's an 80-20 grant. They do have their 20% match set-aside in their budget. That much was discussed, so they have the availability to make the match money on the grant. I'm comfortable that they've given us assurances that the money will be reimbursed to the general fund.
Jim, can you get something in writing as, in regards to either the Transit having the $100,000, the 80%, the 20%, whatever it is they have, and what, give us some guarantee that this money will be reimbursed if they have none?
I will.
They don't have any money.
I'll get what I can from those folks. I'm not going to speculate on what they're willing to give or not willing to give. I guess I will reiterate again that it was the assumption of everybody that discussed this issue, I think it was two weeks ago, is that resolution two weeks old?
May 30th, almost a month.
At that, at that board meeting, it was clearly everybody's understanding, and I believe the board, you were absent, that time, that we were going forward with that project at that point. The BIA contract that was, is being presented here today was a cleanup to that process, and we specifically talked about that a contract would follow, but that we needed to move forward on, based upon the proposal. While clearly you're not comfortable and you didn't vote on the original resolution, I respect that. This issue has moved forward, there's been an awful lot of work already accomplished on this issue to date, based upon the action of the board on that, on that date. So I just need to, you know, bring you up to speed on that.
Well, I'm not prepared to vote on this.
I'm not asking you to, Commissioner, I just wanted to.
Well, then we need to officially, you need to withdraw your second to the motion, I guess, because there was a motion and a second to approve. And so if you're not going to be supported, then I need to withdraw your motion. However, I will not withdraw my motion to the second, because you can just reflect that the motion died for a lack of a second.
Okay.
I did.
Died for a lack of a second.
Bob, did you want to comment on it?
If I understood the resolution that was passed on May 30th, the board has already voted to spend this $99,000 to the architectural firm, and this contract is just entering into a contract with them, the money's been spent. So while your comments are appropriate about whether or not the county will get the reimbursement, the money's already been spent, and the county should probably enter into a contract with these architects.
Okay, but I'm not willing to vote on the contract since I didn't vote on spending the money.
That's your problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, is that the last thing we have today? I believe it was. Is there anybody left?
I may be a journey.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vansy?
Aye.
Or a journey.